There we go. Good evening, we're ready to start the public comment portion of our meeting. No, I can't find my notes. All right, here we go. Comments from visitors must be informational in nature and not exceed five minutes per issue. The board cannot engage in discussion or debate in those five minutes, but will take the information to find answers if that is appropriate. As part of the protocol, it is unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage in character assassination at a public board meeting. Our speaker tonight is Kelly. Oh, Kel- Kelsey, sorry.
That's all right.
Air is too dry for my contacts to settle right right now.
I'll answer anything, basically, almost sometimes. All right, I'm just gonna take this off so it's easier to hear me. So, good evening, Board Superintendent Berg, administrators, and neighbors. I appreciate the opportunity to stand up here and share what I and so many others are feeling at the moment. I may have been harassed and physically threatened the last time I stood up here to speak, but nevertheless, I'll persist. A little later, we'll be getting an update from the district administration regarding the current COVID numbers here in Dakota County. I'm gonna spoil things a little bit here Superintendent Berg, and share some of the data that he'll be reviewing later, later this evening. So as of January 21st, the current cases for the whole state of Minnesota are 155.4 over 10,000. Dakota County stands at 219 over 10,000, and our zip code of 55024, 325 over 10,000. Those are alarming numbers, aren't they? If they don't alarm you, they should. According to the Minnesota Department of Health, 22.8% of tests are positive. This is a 6% increase from the previous week. Ages 19 and under make up approximately 23% of the confirmed cases. A total of 56,992 school age children have contracted COVID. I would continue on with more statistics, but I think I provided enough to show the enormity of the situation. According to the presentation given at the August 23rd board meeting, the parents and community members were told that there would be mandatory masking if ages 3 through 8th grade, if the 14-day COVID-19 cases per 10,000 residents of Dakota County was calculated by weekly Friday reports from Dakota County Public Health, is that 25 or more cases per 10,000. Grades 9 through 12, mandatory masking would happen if there were 50 or more cases per 10,000. Currently, as it stands, we're at 325. So looking at the charts, I did cheat a little bit and I looked at your PowerPoint. Well done, very nicely made. So the charts that you'll be seeing later on, mandatory masks should have been implemented at the beginning of November. So, November 5th, we were at 63 over 10,000. So why was there an amendment to the protocol made at the November 22nd board meeting, making masks strongly recommended, when we were already above the threshold? So I'm really hoping that during the COVID update this evening, masks will be made mandatory for all ages. A Farmington High School student started a petition last week for distance learning. Her petition starts with, "As views in America, we hold little ability to control how legislators and educators act in response to the COVID-19 pandemic." She shares some statistics and follows up with, "The lack of acknowledgement to this is apparent from both the principal of Farmington High School and the entire District 192 Board for not mandating masks at Farmington High School." She also states, "The attempt to sweep COVID numbers under the rug is dishonest and frankly disgusting. This is not a freedom to debate, it's a human decency and our health is on the line." These are your students speaking. The voices that matter the most are those of the students, teachers, and the support staff. So why are we not listening to them? Why are we making decisions for them that compromise not only their physical health, but mental and emotional health as well? The anxiety that they must feel waking up knowing that they're walking into a tenuous situation and possibly coming home with COVID. I have a high school, she's a freshman, and the resounding impression from her and her peers have been, they don't care. It's disheartening that there are those who value their own pride over the health and safety of our students and those that support and teach them. It's okay to be wrong, it's okay to admit when we're wrong. It's how we grow and learn as a collective and as individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we still have a few minutes before the meeting starts. I'm gonna call this meeting to order, let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. First, we'd like to start off with a swearing in of our new student's school board members. Welcome, we're glad you're here, and is Superintendent Berg doing that, I believe?
Yeah, welcome Kennedy and Michael. So if you two would please stand up for me. Kennedy and Michael, do you swear and affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States of this state and that you will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of the Student School Board Member of Independent School District ISD 192, to the best of your judgment and ability? If you do, please say, "I do." Awesome, congratulations and welcome to the school board. They're gonna do a little introduction as part of the student's school board update this week. We didn't make it too hard for them that they could just talk about themselves, so congratulations both of you.
Now I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Jaclyn, second by Kyle, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is approved, we have an agenda. Well now, we're to the part of the meeting that we do every year is we, the board is dissolved and then we organize amongst ourselves who we would like to choose, the various roles on the board. So the first order of business is to, nominations for Chair. So I'm gonna call, are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Board Member Christensen for Chair.
Okay, there is a motion for Christensen for Chair. Any nominations? And thirdly, have to ask three times, are there any other nominations? All right, seen none. We can make, we need a motion and a second to acclamation of Kyle for Chair. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve Kyle as Chair.
Motion, oh, sorry.
No, I made the motion, do we just need a second?
You nominated, you needed the nomination, nominations are different than the motion, yep.
Got it.
So there is a motion on the floor, motion by Rebecca, second by Hannah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations and good luck. There you go, it's all yours.
It's all mine.
It's all yours, have fun.
Thanks. Help me out if I need it.
Always.
So our second, second position is the selection of the Vice Chair. Is there a nomination for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Hannah Simmons for that.
And I would like to nominate Jaclyn Doyle.
There's a nomination for Hannah Simmons and a nomination for Jaclyn Doyle. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? There are, seeing no other nominations, the nominations for Vice Chair are closed. Now we have to go to a vote. All right, so, all in favor of Hannah Simmons as Vice Chair? Say aye.
Aye.
Or do I need to do a roll call vote?
Last year we did a little bit, had a chance to kind of explain like why we were interested in each role. If we want to do that again this year.
It's up to your choice here, how you'd like to do it. You can have people raise hands, you can do a voice vote, you can do a variety of things.
Well, I just did the voice vote and I couldn't really decipher who said yea and nay, so. So let's raise hands. Two votes for Hannah for Vice Chair. Oh, sorry, I didn't vote, three. Can I have votes for Jaclyn Doyle for Vice Chair? Three, okay. What do I do now?
There's a variety of things, you can ask people if you want to speak if you wish.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
You can do that.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Jaclyn, why don't you go first?
Sure. Well, I've enjoyed being on the Executive Committee, especially in the role of Vice Chair, because it's still kind of helping the Chair, but not also having to do all the full responsibilities of the meetings. And I've done it, been on the Executive Committee for a number of years. And I also think if we have a newer member as Chair, it wouldn't be necessarily a bad thing to have more of a veteran member as Vice Chair.
Hannah? I'd really like to serve as Vice Chair this year because I think, as Jaclyn mentioned, she's served several times and I'd really appreciate the opportunity to learn more about the Executive Committee. We're closely with our administration team. Last year, we had two experienced members who served in Chair and Vice Chair role with the explanation provided that we would have future opportunities for new members to grow. So since this is my second year compared to Jaclyn's second term, I'd really appreciate the opportunity to serve and continue learning.
That's fair, I'm gonna, I'm just going to respectfully decline the nomination then, and I will allow Hannah to have that.
Oh, okay.
You're welcome, I think you'll do a great job.
So, do I need a vote or do I need a motion?
You need to do the motion, vote of acclamation, unless there's any other nominations.
All right, can I get a motion for a vote of acclamation for Hannah as Vice Chair?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Congrats.
Hannah Simmons as Vice Chair.
Oh, it's all you guys now.
Just hang on one second, did you get the? Just wanted to make sure she got the motion and the second, so. Oh, sure, I need to repeat that, right? Okay, well, it's okay. So now we'll do, move on to selection of Clerk. Are there any nominations for Clerk?
I'll nominate Member Carrero for Clerk.
Member Carrero's been nominated, are there any other nominations for Clerk? Are there any other nominations for Clerk? Can I get a motion for acclamation of Member Carrero for Clerk?
All moved.
Second.
Motion by Hannah, second by Coletta, all in favor?
Aye.
Steve, you're Clerk.
Thank you.
All right, now our election of Treasurer. Do I have any nominations for the position of Treasurer?
Nominate Board Member Doyle for Treasurer.
Board Member Doyle has been nominated for Treasurer, are there any other, are there any other nominations for Treasurer? Are there any other nominations for Treasurer? Can I get a motion to?
So moved.
To seat Member Doyle as Treasurer.
Second.
Motion by Saucer, second by Coletta, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thus our committee, our, the officers of the Farmington School Board are seated. Our next item is the designation of standing committee membership and assignments. How did we do this last year?
So you can do it a couple of different ways, you could choose to wait till the next meeting so the Executive Committee could review them.
Okay.
Or you can go through the spreadsheet that we have given for that everyone did and just go through it at the table tonight, it's up to you, or up to the Board.
Might make sense to table it so the Executive Committee can take a look and make assignments, is that all right?
That's perfectly appropriate, it's up to your call.
All right. Do I need a motion for that?
I don't believe so.
All right. Our next item on the agenda is to set Board salaries for 2022. Our current salaries, the Chair makes $5,696 per year, the Vice Chair makes $5,137 per year, and each other member makes $4,578 per year. In prior years, I believe the standard procedure was to implement a 2% increase. I know last year we kept it flat. Are there any other comments or questions that the Board or recommendations for how other Board members would like to proceed?
I can't recall, did we do a, was it 2% or were we following the teacher's schedule? Mary Ann, do you recall, or Lori?
I don't think you would have done what this.
We wouldn't have done that, I couldn't remember, I'll be honest, so.
I think it was 2%, I think we decided, if I remember correctly, I think.
I would be in favor of just following that into this year, especially since we didn't do anything last year.
Can I get a motion? Is that your motion?
What?
Well, I don't know if there's any other discussion.
Oh, is there any other discussion?
What are you recommending?
A 2% increase for the year for Board salaries.
Any other discussion? All right, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to increase Board salaries by 2% and Lori, you'd have to give me the exact numbers, if you need those, my apologies.
I'll second it.
Motion by Jaclyn, second by Rebecca, all in favor?
Aye.
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 That passes. All right. Our next item is good news from the superintendent update. Awesome, thank you Chair Christensen, members of the Board and members of the community. This week is Paraprofessional Week across the state of Minnesota, so Governor Walz had a proclamation. And clearly, the paraprofessionals sometimes are a little bit the unsung heroes in our district. They're kind of the Swiss Army knife of what goes on and are willing to step in and do whatever needs to be done to help our learners, especially over the last two years when we've shifted from in-person to distance to hybrid. The role has been ever-evolving and that group has been more than willing to step up and figure out how they can best serve our learners. So just want to give a shout out to our paraprofessionals for Paraprofessional Week. This was a little bit ago since we didn't have our first meeting in January, but if you remember, one of the things that Governor Walz did is, they tried to incentivize vaccinations, especially in high school age kiddos, and they could submit their vaccination proof and they had five $100,000 scholarships through that program. We had one of the winners at FHS. So Josiah Campus, an 11th grader, was one of the winners of that, of that grant. So a pretty cool opportunity, he'll have lots of different choices of where he wants to go for school and not have to worry about anything, which is pretty cool. The FHS debate team sent two teams to state, which was on January 14th and 15th. The meet was shifted to virtual with all the stuff going on, so they actually worked right out of FHS. And because our infrastructure is so awesome with our technology, we invited Lakeville to come over because they were having trouble with theirs. And so they joined our group in doing that, that virtual piece. Riley Tuie and Elena Lys finished 10th, and Elbella Childress and Owen Chamberlain both qualified. And this is pretty cool with this team because it started in 2018, so it's only been around for a little bit of a time. And when it started, Coach Baumann actually, they combined with Rosemont just to get it up and running. And now to their point where they have, you know, multiple teams qualifying for state and finishing 10th. So they're pretty excited about that. And then finally, Coach Baumann was named the MDTA Debate Coach of the Year at the state tournament this weekend. So another really cool opportunity for that group as they go through that. Another congratulations to a group that did some work before break, the LEGO Legends won the Innovation Project Model Award at their competition in Hermantown just before winter break. So this team was created out of kind of that idea of robotics in the middle school, it's kind of that sort of thing. And their innovative design for a drone car combo to deliver packages won that innovative project model. So one of our tech ed teachers, Anne Keelis, is working with those and they did a great job for the first year of trying to figure out how that stuff, you know, worked and went together and did a great job at their first competition, and they were pretty jacked about that. We haven't talked about this for a while, but we've shared with the Board that the ETS around vaccination and testing was struck down by the Supreme Court, so that's not anything we have to worry about anymore, which is good news around all sorts of fronts, not just from the fact that it's a mandate, but also we still weren't quite sure how we were going to be able to implement all those things and the time and money involved, so that's, that's good. Our teaching and learning team, so myself, Mr. Busman, Ms. Edwards, Rick Yonker, and Carrie Betten, two of our instructional coaches, had an opportunity to present at the MSBA Leadership Conference on Friday the 14th. It was a great opportunity to kind of share our work around competencies. Probably had 15, 16 people there, the weather wasn't very good. It was kind of treacherous driving up there and a lot of the outstate people didn't get there. But it was a good opportunity just to share with other Board members kind of the experience of what that design looks like and how it feels. And so Lisa, Chris, Rick, and Carrie have done a really good job of kind of modeling that at different things, to walk them down through the process of designing that. But what does it feel like to go through a learning progression in things that people are used to? And so we had some good questions afterwards, we've had some people follow up. So just another good opportunity for us to share our work. You might have heard some information about the Governor's supplemental budget that's coming out in bits and pieces. You know, there's a $7.7 billion surplus, a lot of it's structural, which means it's ongoing. AMSD, which we're a part of as a district, MASBO, which is a financial one that Jane's part of, MASA is another organization. Kind of two things have risen to the top in terms of legislative advocacy. We'd really like to see the basic formula indexed for inflation so that there's that continuing piece go through there. We don't have high hopes for that one, but it is a pie in the sky sort of thing that would really kind of help match our revenue with what's going on around us. And then the other big one is to eliminate the special education cross subsidy. So that's just another piece that really affects every district. We were talking today in one of our budget meetings. Our cross subsidy in this district, when we first started talking about this about a year and a half ago, was about $7 million, now it's $8.1 million. And again, stuff that we need to be doing to ensure that those learners get the support is just not funded at the rate that it needs to be funded, so it comes out of the general fund. So if they can do something with that special education cross subsidy, that'd be a huge advantage for all districts, so we're pushing for that. We believe the education portion of that is going to be released sometime tomorrow. So we'll kind of get to see what things look like and go from there and be able to provide another update. Two other things, we had some inklings that the city and the county are working on cleaning up the intersection at Flagstaff and Highway 50. It seems like that's rolling along a little bit faster than what we originally anticipated. There was an article in the paper and I reached out to the city administrator and mayor and Dakota County has some preliminary plans in place and those are down the road. But I know that the district and Marshall Lions are going to be involved in kind of the next phases of those plans as it will impact not only people leaving, but the bus routing and some of those different things like that. It has been something that we have been advocating for since the high schools opened up, that how can we make that intersection safer? But how can we also do it in a way that is really going to make it right? So those conversations are ongoing. It sounds like there will be something in place by the time school starts next year. What exactly that is, we're still trying to learn more and stuff, so that'll be a good thing. And then finally, just want to share that it's going to be cold tomorrow and it's going to be cold the next day. Unfortunately, it's not going to be cold enough for us to cancel school. So we, we actually have specific parameters for emergency cold days. And so it's minus 25 air temp and it's minus 40 wind chill. So we're going to get minus 30, but we're probably not going to be minus 40. I've already talked to Tom Severson at the bus company and their buses are indoors and they're all ready to go. So there might be some things going on around us over the next couple of days, but if we don't hit those metrics, we'll be having our kids come in. And then clearly, if families feel like they need to make decisions, you know, based on their own circumstances, they can most certainly call their kids and they'll be all right. But yeah, if that's, the winter weather's a little bit, there's more discretion around that, the cold. We have parameters laid out, so it will dress warm, it's gonna be cold. So that's all I have there, Chair Christensen, thank you very much. All right, our next item is the Student School Board Member Update.
Hi everyone, I'm Kennedy Gibbs, I'm a sophomore at Farmington High School year. I'm part of Student Council, which we are also throwing Spirit Week at the high school this week, or calling it Frost Fest, and we have the dance this Saturday. I'm also a part of Diversity Club, FCCLA, which is a volunteer group at our school. Member of math team, I'm a varsity athlete on the board swim and dive team and I manage for the girls swim and back team. I wanted to be part of the Board because I had an interest in kind of learning about, more about local government and seeing the different things that kind of go on here. I want to be more a part of my community, Farmington has done a lot of great things for me and I want to kind of give back to that sort of sense. And I also kind of want to be a voice for the people who I feel, or they feel like they may not have one and they can reach out to me because I know a lot of people who just feel like the administration is not there for them, so I kind of want to be that bridge for them to feel more comfortable.
Good evening, my name's Michael Murphy, I'm an 11th grader at Farmington High School. A few things about me, I'm one of the captains on Farmington's mock trial team. I've been involved with NHS, Link Crew, which is the orientation, orientation for the high school. I'm involved in track and field and I help, I'm one of the helpers on the tutoring center, which is used throughout the entire high school. I originally applied to this position because I want to be involved in school decisions, make my voice and the voices of other students heard at these meetings, and I wanted to be an approachable voice for really any student that has a issue or something they'd like to bring up. Thank you.
Thanks and welcome to the Board, we're excited to have you here. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is made up of routine business items that can be acted upon with one motion. If any Board member wishes to discuss an item, they may request that it be pulled from the Consent Agenda and it will be acted upon separately. Does anyone have an item that they wish to discuss? Seeing no items, to negate a motion to pass the Consent Agenda.
All moved.
Second? Motion by Jaclyn, second by Steve? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Our next item on the agenda is Reports and Communications. We'll rehear the audit report from Andrew Grace. Welcome.
Thank you. All right, thank you to the Board for having me here tonight. My name's Andrew Grace from Bergen KDV, here to present the audit report for the year ended June 30th, 2021. First, wanted to take a look at the components of the audit. When we issue our audit report, our first objective is to issue an opinion on the financial statements and that is included in our independent auditor's report. We also issue a report on government auditing standards. We issue a report on our single audit in accordance with the Uniform Guidance. Whenever the district expends more than $750,000 in federal awards, it does trigger a compliance or a single audit. And we also issue our report on Minnesota legal compliance. The Office of the State Auditor issues legal compliance guides that we're required to review and report any matters of non-compliance. And lastly, we issue our communications letter. This includes some required communication and also our financial analysis. Now, in our independent auditor's report, it does cover the responsibility of management and our responsibility as your auditor. It's important to remind the Board that management is responsible for the financial statements, so that includes cutting checks, making payroll, taking in receipts, getting all of that information recorded onto the district's general ledger. And it's our job as your auditor to come in, test- onto the district's general ledger. And it's our job as your auditor to come in, test, examine, look at the underlying documentation to support the numbers and disclosures in your financial statements and ultimately give an opinion on the financial statements. And happy to report that we are issuing a clean or an unmodified opinion, which is the best that we can give as your auditor. What that means is this is a true and accurate presentation of the financial position of the district at the end of the year in all material respects. The district also applies for the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And the district does continue to meet those requirements and is continuing to receive that Certificate of Achievement. And next, wanted to go over our Government Auditing Standards Report. This report has us take a look at compliance and internal controls over financial reporting. And we just have one finding to report related to the segregation of accounting duties, just meaning that there is some overlap in some of the accounting functions at the district office. However, it does rise to a level of significance that we do have to report that in this report. And this finding is similar to the finding that was received in the prior year. Next, our report on the Uniform Guidance. The two major federal programs that we took a look at this year was the Special Education Cluster and the Coronavirus Relief Fund. We have to take a look at compliance over these programs and also look at internal control over compliance with these programs. And we had no findings to report in our single audit report. Lastly, our report on Minnesota legal compliance. Again, this is a report where the Office of the State Auditor has us take a look at conflicts of interest, contracts and bidding, claims and disbursements and some other miscellaneous provisions. And we had no findings to report related to Minnesota legal compliance. Next, we'll get into our Communications Letter. And again, this is where we provide our financial analysis. And because the majority of the district's revenue does come through state sources in the form of general education aid, wanted to take a look at the formula allowance. And here, over the past 10 years, we are seeing 2% increases here, starting back to 2016, going all the way through 2022. And again, this is the amount received per pupil unit at the district. And it starts with taking a look at the resident ADMs. And these are the students within the district boundaries here. And we did see a decline this year, going from about 7,600 down to about 7,500 here for 2021. And in order to calculate general education aid, we do have to convert those resident ADM numbers into pupil unit numbers. The Minnesota Department of Education does weight those numbers and gives you about a 20% premium for secondary students. And it also takes into account the open enrollment process. And that open enrollment process did provide, does provide a gain of about 348 students here in 2021, which was an increase over 330 in the prior year. But there was also an increase in the open enrollment loss. That increased from 748 up to 822. And the net pupil unit number for the year was about 7,760, a decrease from about 7,900 in the prior year. Now, when we take a look at the makeup of general fund revenues here in 2021, we are seeing an increase going from about 84 and a half million to about 88 and a half million here in 2021. And the different components of general fund revenue are listed there. There was an increase in the local property tax levy that increased from $10 million to just over $11.3 million here in 2021. And because we did see that decrease in enrollment here in 2021, we did see a slight decrease in state sources of revenue. But the other sources of revenue did have a significant increase. That increased from $4.3 million to under seven, just under $7 million here in 2021. And that was due to the additional federal funding that was received as a result of the pandemic. And the net, net of all those increases there increased your total revenues from again, 84.5 million to about 88 and a half million here in 2021. Next, we'll take a look at the Budget to Actual Results. And this is a great way to highlight the board's responsibility as it relates to the financial statements, and that's adopting and monitoring the budget. The final budget for the year called for $86.9 million in revenue and $86.9 million in expenditures. So the anticipation was a year, for the year was no change in fund balance. When we take a look at actual results, actual revenues came in at $88.4 million, or about $1.5 million better than anticipated. That was due to conservative budgeting for taxes and local and county revenues. And that was offset by a $1.1 million variance coming in less than anticipated for state sources of revenue with enrollment being less than anticipated. And that was offset by sales and other conversions of assets of about $1 million. There was an iPad lot sale for the year that did, ended up generating a variance there. And again, ended up $1.5 million more than anticipated in revenues. On the expenditure side, expenditures came in at $84.2 million, about $2.7 million less than anticipated. And a lot of this has to do with distance learning for the year. And that affected many different categories here and most significantly, sites and buildings and people support services. People support services includes your transportation related costs. And between those two categories, making up the majority of the variances there. The result of operations for the year was an increase in fund balance of about $4.2 million. When we take a look at the makeup of general fund expenditures from 2020 to 2021, there really was, wasn't a significant change in the proportion to each program here. Very consistent here from 2020 to 2021. And also wanted to provide some perspective, providing general fund revenues per student. So providing this information for each fund and also some history there for the last five years and also providing state averages. And because there was a decrease in enrollment this year, we are seeing an increase in revenues per student going from 15,000 to 90,000 to 16,472. And we would expect the state averages to also increase with the additional pandemic funding that was received here in 2021. Also provided the same ratios, the same ratios are also there for expenditures. I think that's here on the following slide. But the next slide here shows the general fund financial position. And we did see that we did have an increase in financial position with the surplus that was generated here in 2021. And that increased the cash and investment balances from 18.5 million to just over $24.3 million. And fund balance increased from 17.2 million up to $21.5 million here in 2021. Now, when we take a look at operations for the last five years, here in 2021, we did have that $4.2 million surplus, but that surplus does fall to various fund balance categories. So the state of Minnesota does provide funding and there are portions of that funding that is, that are restricted for specific purposes. And so any amounts that are unspent at the end of the year are restricted in the related fund balance categories here. And we did have an increase in operating capital restrictions, also increases in the long-term facilities maintenance restrictions and staff development restrictions there. The district also assigns a portion of fund balance for specific purposes and that assignment did increase from $6.5 million to about $9.1 million here in 2021. And the unassigned portion is the remaining amounts, which increased from $7.8 million to just under $8 million here in 2021. The district also has a fund balance policy to maintain, I believe it's between 9 and 12%. And the unassigned fund balance at the end of the year is in line with the district's fund balance policy. Next, we'll take a look at the Food Service Fund. The Food Service Fund had a decrease in revenues this year, going from $2.8 million to $1.9 million. And also had a decrease in expenditures from $2.6 million to $2.1 million. And that was due to a decrease in meals served with a decrease in enrollment that generated a surplus, excuse me, a deficit for the year of about $176,000, decreasing fund balance from $969,000 to $794,000 here in 2021. And then lastly, we have the Community Service Fund. This fund was also impacted by the pandemic with less programming here in 2021. We saw a decrease in revenue going from $4.7 million to just over $4 million in 2021. Also had a decrease in revenues and generated a deficit for the year of about $550,000. Did end the year in a negative fund balance of about $83,000. And similar to the general fund, there are different components of the Community Service Fund fund balances there that are restricted for specific purposes. And that is all we had to cover for the Community Service Fund. And that's a high level summary of the financial results for the year. And next, we'd just like to open it up for any questions.
I have one question about open enrollment. So when do those numbers hit the books? When the student comes in and when the students leave, if they come in like midway through the year? Is it like automatic?
It goes through a calculation process. So as that data happens, it's being reported at the state level and it, it all gets calculated throughout the year. So it's, it's done and allocated proportionately to the time that they spend at the district.
So it's pretty much live data coming in and going out then? Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks so much for having me tonight. Thank you. And thanks, Jane, for all your work with the audit. Very much appreciated.
Next item is the COVID-19 Update. Superintendent Berg.
All right. Good evening, Chair Christensen, members of the board and members of the community. So I'm going to give a, provide a brief update. So there's a number of slides on here. A lot of the slides, we continue just because we've been showing them. I'm not going to go into great depth with some of the county data. It's already been shared tonight for one thing and the other piece is, you know, in general, we know what's going on in the state of Minnesota right now. We know what's going on in our community. Focus tonight is really on what we're seeing in our schools and kind of what we believe is going to happen over the next week or week and a half or so. So one of the things that unfortunately we had to do is we made a shift to flexible learning a little over a week ago, three days with our secondary, two days with our elementary, really based on the logistics of how things were going in our district. We had a sense once we got into winter break and started seeing some of the data coming in from our staff and the number of positives, that staffing might be a little bit of an issue. Became very apparent when you look at this, when we got back beginning. So we started on the four, so you can see fifth, sixth, seventh in there. We had, you know, 90 staff. And this is just our certified staff. So this is easier to pull. So it's just our paraprofessionals and our, and our teachers. So when you're thinking about, you know, 600 people, you're, you know, about one-sixth of your staff out. So that's one thing to try to mitigate. And we have different things that we put in place. We have float subs throughout the district. And we're up to like 11 or 12, something around that, that are building share. So if they have a high number of staff out, we can direct those there. We still do get some subs that pick up, but the issue really becomes for us when we start to see high numbers of unfilled absences. That's when we need to start pulling instructional coaches, staff fill in on their preps. They go without prep, all sorts of different things. They go with specialists. Some of our other teachers fill in and other services go undone. And it got to a point where logistically, we couldn't maintain that anymore and that was the reason for that. The good news is when we came back, we started to see this decrease a little bit. And typically Mondays and Fridays are higher absence days, just for lots of different reasons. We were pretty fired up when we looked at ASOP today and only had 56 staff out and only 16 unfilled subs. And this kind of mirrors what I'm going to show you in a little bit with our confirmed cases with our staff for sure, that we're starting to see that diminish and not be at the level it was for sure the first two weeks we got for, we came back for break. Here's our data. So you can see we broke it out, the cases that were reported, and not necessarily reported during winter break, but the positive case happened during winter break, okay? And then the positive case happened between, you know, January 3rd and the 7th, 8th and the 12th, 13th and 18th. So we broke it up into chunks of time, winter break, when we were back, the pause, you know, when we were back again and those sorts of things. And so when you look, you know, coming out of winter break, we had a significant number of staff test positive. It was almost equal to the two previous weeks before this past week. Our early childhood numbers took a rise in the middle. Elementary learners took a big rise in the middle. I mean, it mirrors everything that we were seeing across the state of Minnesota. And the reality is we spent, or I spent an enormous amount of time with superintendents, not only Dakota County, but in the metro area. This was the same thing that every school district was dealing with at about the same time. Not only staff, but an increase in cases. The news to me that is, is good is the last three days last week, when we look at just those three days, four staff members reported positive over those three days. EC is lower, elementary, you know, 20 over three days. But when you start to parse that out, you know, that, that gets us closer to where we were before break in November, those sorts of things. Middle school learners and high school learners. So these high mark numbers seem to be trending down a little bit. Now, this week will be a big week to see if that actually is what's happening. You know, the big question out there is with the Omicron wave, is it crested? Is it falling? There's different models out there. There's a model out from Washington University in Washington State that says the peak in Minnesota was a week and a half ago. Mayo says that the peak is going to be later this week. I think it's a little bit hard to determine with some of the backlog cases that MDH is reporting as part of the information and stuff that we get. You know, are those, in a lot of cases, they're 10, 12 days old. So where are we actually in this? So we can think about moving forward. Our staff, over the weekend, we only had three positive reports from our staff over the weekend. And our numbers for students, again, was much more aligned with what we were seeing before these previous three weeks. So that, in our minds, is good news. The other thing that we've been tracking, and so I had Mr. Busman pull this for last Thursday. Again, Fridays and Mondays for our students mirror our staff a little bit. Those are a little bit harder to gauge. So we looked at last Thursday. And again, these numbers are elevated. This isn't typically what we see. But the, but when we looked right before we started a decision to make the pause with our students, our high schools and middle schools were above 20% and our elementaries. All of them were north of 16, 17%. So not only were we getting hit with that Omicron wave, we're also getting hit with strep throat. Influenza A has been another big one that we've seen in the district and things like that. So it's just been a compounding piece of illnesses that our staff and students have kind of been dealing with. And it looks like we're starting to come out of it a little bit. One of the things that we do report is when that influenza-like illness threshold reaches 5% of students and staff in the building, we do report that to MDH. And we did not report any buildings prior to winter break. And as we've come back, you can see we've reported four buildings for being above that and stuff. So. This I found really interesting because, I mean, it's what I've been doing for two years. And I'd much rather be doing other things in the superintendency than learning about COVID and mitigation strategies and things like that. But I've shared this person, David Montgomery, is a reporter for NPR. And this is what he's been doing for two years. He does weekly updates and daily updates on Twitter. It's really interesting to kind of follow that and get his perspective. He was super excited a week and a half ago on Twitter because he finally got data that he's been looking for. He got access to the wastewater data. So that's another way to track the coronavirus in, in communities is how it shows up in the wastewater. And so he graphed out, and if you look at this graph, according to him, now again, he's, he's just reporting data. Based on his information, he'd say that in the metro area, the coronavirus, this, this wave actually peaked last week according to the wastewater. Now, cases trail behind that a little bit, but I think this would mirror a little bit what we're seeing in our district as well. So before I go to the next piece, I don't know, does anybody have any questions over any of our district data or things like that?
David Montgomery has a great overlay of that same graph with following the actual case trends too about that same time. It's, it's, it's pretty good.
Yeah, it's, I started reading about that in some different articles right before break around different parts of the country and stuff. And it just, it's hard. You know, and we've admitted, right? I mean, how do you track this? You track it in your district because that's the information you get. But again, that information is only good as people that provide it to us, right? We understand that there's positive cases that aren't being reported. We, I mean, we get that. That, that's been the way illness in schools have been since schools have been around. So we have to take our information with a grain of salt. But how do we figure out, you know, exactly where are things going trending in our state and around our community? And we've talked about before that some of the issues with the data that we've received from Dakota County and the state is at different times. It includes backlog data, data that is. It includes backlog data, data that is significantly old. Or the day that he provided this, I think the state of Minnesota reported 11,000 cases, 12,000 cases or something like that, that day. 80% of them were 10 days old. So again, it's trying to put all this information together to try to figure out where we're going. And based on everything that I can and see and look at, the wastewater is probably the most up-to-date information of where things are at. So I just thought it was interesting and just wanted to provide another avenue to a data point.
Could you explain a little bit more of the history of tracking ILI illnesses in the district? And if we've ever seen the 5% before and what we would've done pre-COVID, just in terms of general of how that works?
Yeah, well, I mean, the funny thing is, is the ILI, I mean, it was much more likely that we report a classroom for ILI, because there's the three, if you have three students in a classroom that have the ILI symptoms, you report a classroom. That was much more likely than reporting a building. To be honest, when I was the principal of the high school, I can't remember one time that anybody ever mentioned ILI or we had to worry about it. I know that right before the state moved to distance learning, if you think back to that, Shakopee actually moved their, I think their whole district, or at least their secondary, they started their break early because of their ILI numbers were so high and stuff. So, you know, you report, you look at your stuff, you report it to MDH. They may come back with some recommendations and things like that. But it's really just a reporting mechanism to sit back and take a look at, okay, so you have this. What's going on? What are some things that can be done, those sorts of things?
Thank you.
So it's been around for a long time. It just haven't seen it like this like the past two years.
Well, and I know, Jason, you talked a little bit about during our conversation just with not only the unfilled absences logistically onsite in the building, but with as many students out, the pressure that that puts on our teachers trying to support students who are at home and having a large percentage of students who are at home and needing support remotely while still teaching and providing instruction in the classroom. And so...
Yeah, when you go back and when we were at, I mean, at higher numbers, I mean, again, this is a snapshot and, you know, where things are, these are fairly elevated. But when you start to look at 20% of your, you know, your students out for various reasons, all sorts of different reasons, it does become problematic when you basically have a fifth of your class or maybe more not in during that day. And how do you best serve them? And it's very difficult for everybody involved, kids in the classroom, kids at home and the teacher, to do that. And that went into part of the decision as well, the logistical part of how do you manage that and best support then? Again, we know flexible learning's not the best either. But, you know, how could we buy a little bit of time around the break that was natural coming to give us a, you know, a six or seven day period to kinda let things settle down a little bit and get our staff back in into our buildings?
Yeah, and I certainly appreciate all of the things that you as an administrative team have done to try and balance the needs of our educators, our paras, all of our staff onsite with those of students. And I know that in response to the petition that was mentioned earlier tonight about why can't we offer a distance learning option right now? I know quite a few people are aware that we surveyed parents in the beginning of the year, but maybe you can talk a little bit more about the feasibility of that and...
Yeah, so, I mean, when we were required to from MDH or MDE last year, I mean, it was a three or four month process trying to figure out, how are we gonna organize this? How are we gonna get people? And it really starts with staffing. You know, you begin your year, and when you build a schedule and you build your classes, it starts with staffing. And if you try to, it becomes problematic without adding additional staff to be able to add those different pieces in. And so one of the reasons, we understand, right? Things were different when we surveyed families around that option of whether we could do that or not. But once we made the decision that we did not have enough families that were interested, and especially in a year-long experience too, that was another part of it, right? It became, that was one of the most difficult things when we did offer the distance learning option where families wanting to come back and go, because you have a classroom. Let's say you set it up and you have 20 kids in there, and now you have, you know, 15 or 20 that wanna come back. Puts you over your class levels and different things like that. And so there's some commitment pieces too that we asked people when they started thinking about that of how do we do this and manage this in a way that we can provide a good experience, a distance learning experience if people choose that, but also a good experience in person and not sacrifice one for the other. And to try to do that midstream is very problematic without, again, without additional investments around those different things and stuff like that. And then you need getting the right teachers to be able to teach the right courses based on what kids, if kids wanna do that, you know? Because it's not like you would just be able to keep the classes that you have based on a current class schedule like we did in the past. I know buildings are trying to work as much as they can with people and provide support when they're able to. But unfortunately, we weren't able to organize to that this year.
I appreciate that. And I know we've heard from a few community members too, who, given the change in our masking policy, were understandably in a difficult position, especially if they had immunocompromised family members at home or children of a young age like mine that can't be vaccinated yet. Can you talk a little bit about the options for those families if they have decided that in-person learning is not what's best for them right now, what we can do?
I mean, we just talked about enrollment going out. We hate to do, but I mean, the best options, right? I mean, we've had families choose to homeschool, right? So there's that option there. And again, that depends on family dynamics and things like that. And at the beginning of the year, when we made a decision about the protocols that we had in place, we had families make that choice as well. So this has been an ongoing, you know, choice that families have made based on our mitigation strategies for the last two and a half years. And I think unfortunately, that has been an impact on our enrollment, you know? I mean, families are looking out for what they believe is best for them. And hopefully, we can provide that. But based on this, you know, opportunities and how we organize, we're not always able to provide that. So I think homeschool is one option. And, you know, there are multiple online schools that are free that, you know, families can engage with as well. And MDE has a site with those on there. I think those are the two, I guess they're not great options because they're not here, but those are the two best options available right now. Our plan again is to provide an opportunity for an online learning experience next year. And we'll go through the process again to see if we can, you know, have enough families to make that go. Because we'd like to provide that opportunity. I know it does provide a ton of flexibility in lots of different ways for families. And Mr. Busman and Ms. Edwards have spent a lot of time on completing our online application. So we'd like to be able to provide that experience and have some people be a part of that next year.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. I know you've talked a lot about the implications of the pandemic, not just on the day-to-day operations, but how much growth. And we talked about returning to normal, but what does that look like? Because so many students actually thrived with that kind of flexibility and that support. So I appreciate you talking about that.
Yeah, I think for us, I mean, we've talked about return to normal or baseline. I think it's more like, can we get a return to no disruption, right? That's really, I think, what we have started to talk about. Because, you know, I think at the beginning of August, we felt like, all right, this is gonna be it. This is gonna be, and take the pandemic aspect out of it. With the disruption that our learners have had, we've talked about this, right? The disruption that our learners had the last, the previous year and a half, you know, reintegrating them back into a learning community has taken some work. You know, our third graders, you know, haven't really been in. Kindergarters haven't been in those. So all those things that we took for granted are things that we are re-teaching and regathering those social norms. And I don't know, we thought about it? I don't know if we ever knew it was gonna be as heavy lift as it is. It's good work, right? I mean, it's the stuff that we need to do to support our kids where they're at. But I think it's been a little bit more complex than we originally thought. And then you lay on top of it, you know, the ongoing waves that we've seen within the pandemic that just add more disruption to everything. So I don't know if they'll ever be normal. We just hope for no disruption.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Yep. Just a couple other things that I did wanna share. So we did share with families last week that we do have at-home testing options available for families that want that. So we have 9,000 test kits that we ordered from the state of Minnesota that arrived last week. Families can pick up a test kit per learner. There's two tests in that. We have another shipment on the way. And so if that's something that, you know, families are interested, they can check out to their school and see if there's, when there becomes potential. We still have our Q testing, so that can still take place in school. And then we finally are up and running full with our two additional nurses and our health assistants. And the next piece will be working on some drive-up testing with the Q testing as well. We're almost there with that. So we've expanded the testing opportunity and made it significantly easier for families to access that over the last week and a half, which is a good thing. And then face masks, we just ordered last week about 4,300 adult KN95 masks. That'll be available to our secondary learners. They're gonna be too big for our elementary learners, but we got those through the state as well. So Mr. Miller's working on picking those up hopefully late next, or late this week or early next week. And then again, available for kiddos that wanna use those. And then beginning last week, we had N95s available for staff that wanted those as well. So a couple other mitigations that we've layered in and that we will have for people that choose. You know, it took us a little bit by surprise over a break when the guidance around masking changed. Their MDH and the CDC have moved away from kinda the basic cloth mask for the most part, are recommending N95s and KN95s. And if you don't have that, a surgical mask and then after that, a two-layer mask. So trying to, if we'd've known that, we'd've been a little more on top with some of this stuff. But it changed. CDC's been changing things rather quickly without much notice lately, so.
And Jason, I know you clarified for me, but the at-home tests, if parents work during the day or otherwise unavailable to pick it up.
We will send them home with learners. We just need the parents to call. Yep, we're not gonna put a test in anybody's backpack that doesn't know it's coming. So, and again, if there's any other questions, they can certainly call our, the nurse's office or the health assistance office. And if somebody's really struggling with something or needs an additional one or things like that, we're more than happy to work with them to find that. And one of the things that we'll talk about is kinda changing the protocols around the tests that are accepted. So PCR and antigen tests now, the district will accept. It just needs to be through a third-party vendor. And there's lots of different ways that that can, the BB vendors are, the Qs are. So that should take care of any testing fam, any testing needs that families would want to take part of.
And as part of that change, Jason, are we also moving to the five-day from our current? Aren't we updating our policy from...
That'll come in administrative action, yep.
Okay, thanks.
The one, the tests that we're still not gonna, it's too hard for our health assistants, the ones that just simply have no third-party verification and take a picture of it and try to figure out, is that line? Is it not aligned? That sort of thing. So again, if families need help with that third-party piece, we have enough tests now where we can help with that so that it's easier to verify. So it's not a screenshot of the little tube and trying to figure out, is that third line crossed? Is it not crossed? Just, it's too hard. There's enough stuff going on with them to do that. And we have enough where we can support families if they want that. And then as I shared, the other parts of this are just the different case averages. And as Mr. Zinski shared, I mean, we know, again, we know that across the state of Minnesota, in our area, they're going up. I think the bigger question now is which direction are they're going? So the seven-day average dropped in Dakota County. The 14-day average is gonna go up because it's the 14-day average. See, it's gonna go as quick, but we anticipate next time it'll go down. 550402 had a big jump week ago. Seven-day took a little bit of a jump. Then now we're seeing the big jump in the 14-day case average to the other one. Per 10,000, 219 for the 14-day rate. The 5502 is 325. COVID tracker, so this is out of the CDC, is 1332. And the positivity rate is 28.6. And I didn't look at what, it updates daily. I looked last Friday and looked, but over the weekend, it was trending down again. So, I mean, this is what we've been seeing and stuff. So this is not surprising.
Any other questions or comments? Can I get a motion to accept communications and reports?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Carrero, second by Saucer. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Our next item is administrative action. Our first issue is award the contract for Farmington High School Campus Improvement Project. Dan?
All right. Good evening, Chair Christensen, members of the board, members of the community. Here this evening to discuss or present to you the results of our bid that we had taken out for the Farmington High School campus projects, which, if you recall, is for the addition of a ticket booth and permanent restrooms on the home side of the stadium, an addition of another parking lot on the west side of the home side of the stadium. And then lastly, a multi-purpose building for the purposes of storing maintenance equipment, athletic equipment, and also housing visiting teams as a kind of team room slash locker room area there. So we did accept bids. They were due on Tuesday, January 11th. We had a very good turnout. We had nine contractors provide bids to us. As you can see here in the letter from our architects and engineers from WOLD, our low bid came in from Metcon Construction out of Faribault. We have done business with them in the past. They have done some of our kindergarten additions and some other projects historically for the district. The base bid came in at a little over $3 million, so $3,094,000. The alternate bid at $49,000. If you read through the letter there, you will notice that the $49,000 alternate, we do feel like we need to accept that. Our hope is that we will not actually need to perform that work. It is for some lowering of some water mains that are in the area of the new parking lot. And so we're not 100% confident that when we regrade that space to include the parking lot, that those will be at a depth that will be acceptable. So we're trying to be cautious of that with the hope that once excavation actually takes place, that we may not need to expend it. If we don't, great. But as always, we prefer to be conservative and put it in the budget to begin with. And as you can see, I can scroll down here a little bit. So this was the bid tab. My apologies, because we had so many bidders, it does not fit on one page. Most of them were relatively close in their bids. We did have a couple that were a bit high, but we did have a pretty nice cluster of bids that were quite close. Overall, I will say this did come in just a little bit over our revised budget, which we were not surprised by. As we're all aware, things are costing a little bit more. We had really tried hard to continuously update our budget. But it did come in probably about 125 over what we had budgeted for the construction portion of this project. So unless, I guess, there are any other questions? I guess I could take those first and then I believe there is a motion that's there. If anyone has any questions.
Just a quick question. Remind us where the funding for this is coming from.
Oh, yes, thank you. So the funding for this project would be coming out of our 2015 bond funds, the remaining bond funds that we have available from that 2015 bond.
Thank you.
And just to further reiterate, we talked before in the past that with some of these concerns with the budgeting piece, we have been strategic over the past year or so. With some of our other projects that are eligible for LTFM funding, we have shifted some of those funds for those projects, roofs or windows, parking lot types of work that we've been doing. That's been a combination of LTFM dollars and the bond funds so that we feel confident that we can, that we can... that we can, uh, that we have the, the money and the budget to, uh, move forward with this project.
Seeing no other comments, uh, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to award the Farmington High School Campus Improvements Project inclusive of the base bid and alternate number two to Metcon Construction for three million one hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion by, motion by Jaclyn, second by, by Hannah. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Our next item is LED lighting contractor recommendation.
All right, thank you again, uh, Chair Christensen, members of the board. Um, so we've talked a little bit about this, um, so this is a, a bit of a unique project, uh, it's a little bit different. Uh, so what we have up there is, um, a couple of different, uh, companies who expressed interest in working with us, partnering with us, um, to engage in, uh, hopefully, um, a guaranteed energy savings contract, that is what the G E S C stands for on that document. Uh, so we did put that out, um, put the proposal out, it's not necessarily a bid, uh, because there are no dollars assigned to this at this point. Um, what it really is about is, uh, having a couple of companies or any companies that were interested in submitting a proposal, come in, provide us a complete comprehensive, uh, lighting energy audit, um, at all of our sites, and then begin the process of, uh, determining whether or not they are in the, they are in the position, uh, to enter into a guaranteed energy savings contract with us, which basically means that the energy savings, the dollars, the funding, uh, that we would save as a result of making changes and upgrades to LED lighting, uh, from our current lighting situation would self-fund the project, um, over a period of time. Uh, and so, that is negotiable, um, and so it's not a hard number right now. Uh, this was, this would basically give us permission to move forward with that initial piece of bringing a company in and doing the audit, and then, as a result of the audit, um, being able to put together a, a contract that we would then come back to the board with, uh, for approval to enter into the actual contract, if both parties believe that we can meet our objectives financially to do that. Um, so we put together, uh, kind of a matrix in terms of what we were looking for, uh, companies, the two companies that submitted proposals, um, about a week and a half ago, um, so we kinda put their, uh, submissions into, uh, the matrix, and, uh, the recommended, uh, company that, uh, we would like to go with is, uh, Bright Schools Noble, uh, Noble, um, Conservation Solutions, who are out of Andover, uh, here in Minnesota. So they have done, um, just, uh, I'm gonna draw a blank on some of the other ones, so they have done, they submitted as part of theirs, uh, five other, uh, relatively local Minnesota school, public school districts, um, that they have done, uh, here over the past, uh, I'd say five years, I don't remember the exact dates, um, that were very much in line with what we're looking to do, LED-only projects, um, relatively quick timeframes, um, to get all the, everything done, and with ten or less years of, um, kinda that self-funding, uh, type of a timeframe. So.
I went up to their website and saw that, I think Minnehaha Academy was one of the metro area ones, I, I think there was one of the, I don't know, Mankato State and maybe another, uh, school in the area. Is it too soon that you've talked to any of those?
Um, so, no, I have talked to, so, um, in fact, so I, I was able to connect with two, um, two of the, uh, references or the schools that the Ameresco company had provided, um, and then with the Bright Schools, um, I had connected with, um, two of them also, uh, one, actually, a number of us had, had talked to on a conference call, um, but then they also provided, uh, video testimonials, um, as well, um, from the, uh, the Bright Schools Noble, which was, um, a, a nice touch and, and very, uh, very helpful, to be honest.
Okay.
From each one of their references.
Any other comments or questions?
What's the timeline on this one?
Um, uh, that was one of the other, um, in my opinion, uh, positives, uh, with the Bright Schools, um, because literally, they would be poised to start having conversations with us as early as tomorrow.
Oh, cool.
Um, so they are looking to move, um, they, they have, uh, they're local, um, they are able to mobilize, um, they have actual product in their warehouse, which we're not to that point yet, um, but they've got their folks, quote-unquote, "here" and they're ready to go. Um, it would, and then, uh, they would potentially, if we can, if we can keep up with them, if we can keep up with them, uh, they could potentially be doing work in April. Um, and they do work, um, their primary approach is working second shift, um, 'cause they're used to it, they're used to schools, um, they know how that impacts our operations.
So no real impact on classroom learning?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yeah. So with, with the intent of everything being wrapped up, um, by the beginning of next school year.
Any other comments or questions? All right, um, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to grant administration permission to proceed with the Bright Schools Project, Noble Conservation Solutions, and a lighting energy audit, and the development of a guaranteed energy savings contract under Minnesota Statute one twenty-three B point six-five for the purposes of retrofitting district facilities with LED lighting.
Second.
Motion by Hannah, second by Melissa. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
All right, our next item is, uh, approval of updated isolation and quarantine protocols.
So, yeah, one of the things the board had asked us to do was, uh, based on the guidance from the CDC, was to, um, provide a recommendation for updated isolation and quarantine protocols, just to give a little bit of timeline, um, right before New Year's, the CDC just basically, in a newspaper announcement, said that they were gonna shorten their isolation guidelines to five days and five days of masking. Um, clearly that caught us by surprise, um, I guess a lot of people by surprise, and when they shared that, there was no real information with that, other than just a news release. So it did take us some time, uh, to dig in a little bit. Um, MDH did not update or provide schools, um, updated information around this until about a week and a half ago. Um, so we waited to, to see what that would look like, to see how it'd impact all of our protocols before we put this together before the board. And then we had to figure out some internal operations around some of the requirements and things like that. So, what the board has before them basically is, um, our current protocols, um, with the change of, um, shortening the isolation quarantine period to five days, five full days, so that the, the, you know, the, it, day zero depends on, is it the onset of symptoms or the test, that's day zero, then it's five full days. And, um, if the student has no symptoms or the symptoms is improved, which really talks about being fever-free, those sorts of things, for twenty-four hours without any medication, then they can return on day six, provided that they wear a mask, um, while in buildings in our activities, um, through that time and stuff. So, that is the update, that is really the, the change in protocols. Um, it, it does include, you know, other than eating and drinking, um, the requirement to be a mask during those times, so it'd be during activities and things like that, um, that follows the basic guidelines, um, that MDH and CDC has, has provided with us. Um, the Minnesota State High School League, um, does not allow for return to competition for ten days, um, so that would still be in place for our athletes, so they could come and practice, but they cannot be part of interscholastic competition until ten days, so that's another little caveat that's outside of that. But otherwise, um, the protocols would allow for a return after, uh, five days, no testing requirement, um, uh, to do that, um, with those pieces and stuff, so. Um, I don't know if the board has any questions, otherwise, there is a, um, there is, uh, no, I can't think of the word, there is a thing in front of you to consider.
Attempted to turn this thing.
So, to think about.
Questions, comments?
I guess the question I have would be, as, as guidelines change, kinda what, how will we operate going forward? I know we've talked about this before, we haven't had the conversation as a board in terms of, the board's made decisions in the past, and then this was an update, and the board's approving this tonight, but going forward, as, in the environment changes, as conditions change, recommendations change, what, how will we proceed?
Yep, so, I mean, the board can direct me to do as they wish, um, I, I've shared this before, and I'll share this publicly, it was, it was more consistent for me, for me when, when it was, the expectation was that I was making the decisions, notifying the board but making the decisions, when the baseline was the MDH guidance, it was, whether people liked it or not, that was the baseline. Um, I, I think it's a little bit harder for me to differentiate which ones I should be making decisions on and which one the board should be making decisions on. So, it would be my recommendation that changes to protocol should come through the board, um, since we are deviating from, um, the recommendations that have been given to schools. That would be my suggestion, but again, I can, I can do with the board, I mean, there's, there's a timeframe in that, I get, I understand, and there was some frustration, I understand that from people, as guidelines change, we wanna hurry up and, and be able to, to change those, but, um, I do think it's important that, um, if, if there's gonna be things that we follow and things that we change and make our own, that the board is part of that process. If we choose to go back and use, you know, use the guidelines that are provided to us, then I think we can be more fluid, but, um, I don't know if we're quite in that position anymore. That's my personal opinion, but.
This is sort of a, this is sort of a unique circumstance, right, where the prior, uh, the prior guidance was to use the Minnesota Department of Health decision tree, and they have not updated the decision tree, they had instead replaced it with something else, and so.
Yeah.
It's almost like a technicality.
They set, they set up some stuff today, um, updated today to the nurses, that has updated a bunch of things, I haven't been able to see if they've updated the decision tree.
True.
Um, but I, I, I mean.
I mean, all roads, all roads lead to this moment, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm talking more in general, what the baselines we wanna use and things like that, so, um, you know, and I, to be honest with you too, right, I mean, the board made the decision that we're gonna not require masks, this is requiring masks, so for, for our staff and for our learners that are coming back in day five, this is, the requirement is, it's not an expectation, it's not, you can do this, requirement is to be in the buildings during this time, is to wear a mask. And so we are putting some protocols in place, clearly we want teachers chasing things around and stuff like that, but we think we have some things in infinite campus that will be reminders to staff and reminders to, um, families that here's how long the expectation, the requirement is, and this is when it's done, and, you know, the expectation.
Is that like a daily list or something like that?
Nah, it, we can do it right in campus, I mean, currently now, when a student's out, it, that, our health assistants put them in their quarantine, they put them in for the quarantine time, I think what we're simply gonna do is just change.
How does, how does the teacher see that?
They, it's right in, so when they take attendance, so for every class, so if I'm an elementary teacher, I have access to my class, if I'm a secondary teacher, I have access to all six of my classes, and I can just, I can pull up my attendance, and right then and there, I can see who's already gone for the day, are they ill, do they have an athletic event, are they in quarantine?
Sure.
The change that we're planning on making, if the board approves this, is, we'll just have the quarantine for five days or whatever the number of school days is, and then replace the second half of that with a, um, code that just says MR, mask required.
Sure.
And so, the only people who see that are staff that have those kids, and families will be able to see that. And the expectation is, you know, just like, you know, we, we should have been doing before, just, you know, if a student that's supposed to have a mask on doesn't have one, do you need a mask, you know, did you forget it? I mean, uh, we're, we're hoping that this is a choice that people are sending back, that we don't have just flat-out, um, refusal to do that, and then it becomes an industry, but we don't anticipate that happening.
Yeah, the big difference I, I see between this and, you know, current weather recommendations is that this is time-bound and targeted.
Yep, yep.
And so it's, I think, probably easier for me to get there.
Yeah, yeah.
It needs it for most parents, probably.
Yeah, and I was trying to put it from the perspective of, staff are a little bit nervous about this, just from this perspective of, how do you, you know, how do you track it, and, you know, I mean, what are you doing, sort of thing, so we're trying to ease that with some of those internal pieces, uh, processes of, of how to deal with that, and how, so that it's not an additional tracking thing for them, to your point of running a list every day, if it pops up in campus, it's, it's pretty easy to track and use, and we believe that'll be helpful.
Great, yeah, and the other things I've heard is, from others who reviewed this, uh, reviewed the guidelines here, is, uh, you know, both about, you know, privacy of students too, how's that being managed, and what you're talking about makes perfect sense, I think the next question then becomes is, how are teachers, uh, or how is any, you know, if a student isn't, I mean, how are they calling that out? I mean, I would imagine.
Should do it in a private manner.
Exactly.
That's the expectation, now, again, we, are we perfect with all that stuff? Most certainly not, and we, we follow up with it when that doesn't happen, that, but the expectation is that's the way it should be.
Right. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments?
Jason, for the childcare programs that fall under the purview of the district, um, I'm just looking at the updated guidance here, um, and that's a, that's a gray area, I know, not just for our district, but for a lot of daycare providers in terms of what should they follow, just because the wording is still, um, a fourteen-day quarantine is safest, and then maybe seven or ten, so can you talk a little bit for the, for the stepping stones, for those that fall under?
Or does, are, anything that's underneath ISD one-nine-two and communication will follow this?
Okay.
And I know that, and I don't follow this super closely, but I, I know that, uh, the Department of Health just recently changed some of their guidelines for, um, childcare providers, I read it in the paper, I didn't follow it too closely, but I think they changed some of the stuff too, but no, any, anything that's within our, in our entity, well, this will be the protocols that they follow.
I, I just wonder if for, um, children, especially under the age of six, if, if, back to some of the original conversations we have, given the, um, recommendations around a well-fitting mask and knowing the challenges that children of that age have, or, you know, A, just keeping a mask on, let alone it being well-fitting, as well as our case numbers for our district have shown a reduced rate of spread among that age group, if it, if it makes sense to.
Yeah, that's where you get into the conflict too, between the World Health Organization and the, and all the international bodies and the CDC.
This is, so my sugge, I, I understand, my suggestion is this is new, um, and it's significantly shortened, I, I think we should take some time to, to see what it looks like before we, before we go least restrictive, 'cause I looked at it today in terms of MDH, in terms, does it say specifically, and it doesn't really talk about ages in there. It, it talks specifically about ages around vaccinations, but it doesn't talk about, um, the masking aspect about it.
I think my concern though, as a parent of children in that age group, Jason, is just, the science shows that children are much less likely to spread it to adults, so anyone that's caring for them of that age, so that's not, um, that's not a serious risk for the, um, staff that are serving them, but also, I think just for that age group to have had it required, now it's not, now trying to explain to a three- or four-year-old again, like, now you have to try and keep it on. Um, I too support the least restrictive way that we can, in a way that makes sense, and for three- and four-year-olds, I just, um, it's hard for me to imagine that, um, i- if they are returning after the five days, that A, their chance of spreading it to others is high, and B, if they can keep a well-fitted mask on and throughout the day to really balance that benefit.
Hannah, I see what you're saying, I think, I think how I look to do it as a parent would be just kind of like, you know, we're just trying to be safe and follow the rules, and if you were sick, we just wanna make sure that people aren't getting sick. I mean, and I understand how difficult it is to keep masks on little kids, and I think they just, as parents and as educators in the classroom, just try to do their best and give them some grace at the same time. That's how I look at it.
That's fair.
But, you know, I mean, just like the circumstance it is, it is right now, I think there's gonna be a lot of people in society that will mask when they're not feeling well, regardless of COVID.
Certainly.
So I think that's where things have gone, and I think it's just a responsibility factor that you work on within the classroom and the environment, even if you're not in favor of it, there are, those are the options you've got right now. That's how I look at it, but I appreciate your comments, 'cause I totally understand what you're saying, the little ones need to see facial expressions, need to hear their teacher, need to participate, but within the guidelines we're working with right now, that's how I think I would frame it.
I have a question about, for secondary, for more secondary education, um, what's your method for enforcing? So if a student comes back after a quarantine, doesn't wanna wear the mask, what methods are there to enforce that restriction?
If they, they don't want to?
Yes.
If they don't want to, well, then they'll work with administration, but the, the requirement to have, will have, be to have a mask on in the building. If, if they, if their refusal to wear a mask, is that what you're asking?
Yes, yes.
Then they'll continue their isolation and quarantine at home for the last ten days.
I'd just like to make a comment, what, uh, Michael had said, um, my son, unfortunately, well, he didn't want to wear a mask, and he only had a couple days left, 'cause it kinda hit right with the, the holiday and stuff, and so we kept him home during that time, and his teachers were fabulous about helping him and getting him his schoolwork that he needed to do at home, to finish out that quarantine period, so it was just a matter of us reaching out and saying, you know, he's gonna be home a little bit longer, so, um, like I said, every- So like I said, everybody was really great about, you know, making sure he had the work that he needed to do. He just did at-home learning, worked out good.
There are no further comments or questions? I guess, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended update to the COVID-19 isolation quarantine protocols as presented.
Second.
Motion by Jaclyn, second by Rebecca. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Our next item is policy discussions. Who's leading this?
I am. So for our policy discussion section of the agenda tonight, we have a number of policies that, this is their second reading and up for discussion with other board members. So the first is Policy 501, the school weapons policy. This had a number of updates that were suggestions or changes made by MSBA, no additional changes. The next one is Policy 506, student discipline. This one also had minor edits, recommended by MSBA in terms of language. Policy 514, bullying prohibition policy, had no major content changes, just additional updates recommended by MSBA. Policy 522, Title IX sex non-discrimination policy and grievance procedure. No major changes to this policy either. And if there, sorry, one more. The last one is Policy 1019, that's open for discussion tonight, student attendance. And this had some key updates that were made, but nothing really to the, the delivery of the policy. Take any questions?
I didn't have any. I, the changes all looked fairly straightforward when I reviewed. Okay. Any other, any, anything else?
Not for those.
Okay, so we can move on to policy action?
So for the policy action section, these are policies that are having their third and final reading at the board tonight. Policy 406, public and private personnel data. Policy 410, family and medical leave. Policy 413, harassment and violence. Policy 414, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. And finally, Policy 1012. So these have all come before the board before. The memorial policy had just a couple minor edits between our last reading and now in, in terms of the title for the flight team that were recommended by the administration. Otherwise, no other changes have been made to the policies since the board last reviewed them. There's no additional discussion, these will need a motion to approve and adopt.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Policy 406, public and private personnel data. Policy 410, family and medical leave. Policy 413, harassment and violence. Policy 414, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. And Policy 1012, memorial policy.
Second. Motion by Jaclyn, second by Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next section is board remarks. Melissa always started from one end to the other, but I never remember where she started or where she left off.
It all depend on the day.
Steve, you want to go first?
First thing I want to say is, Melissa and Jaclyn, thank you for your services last year for chair and vice chair. I know it was very challenging, so I really appreciate that. And Kyle and Hannah, welcome aboard on that, congratulations. To our two new school board members, Kennedy and Michael, you know, you guys did a great job in the interview process. We interviewed a bunch of candidates, Melissa and I did. But I'll tell you, you guys bring a unique facet, and we're looking forward to working with you on that. So welcome aboard. Paraprofessional week, again, Superintendent Burke hit on a lot of these. Thank you for all the hard work you paras do out there. The debate team, I will tell you, whoever updates the website out there does a phenomenal job sending that information out, that, excuse me, as well as the dance team, the robotics teams. It's nice to see all that information out there. Coach Baumann, again, congratulations on that. Also to the staff that presented at MSBA, thank you for doing that. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend that day, had to actually work that day. But again, thank you for presenting during that. Jane, great job again on the review tonight with the finances. Appreciate that. And Dan, again, great job on the facility stuff and the updates, as you presented earlier today. And that is all I have.
Let's start with our student members. I think that'd be you first, Michael.
As of right now, I have no comment.
Good start.
For me, it's been a great first meeting. It's been great to see a lot of the different things that we do here and kind of see how it's going. So excited.
Hannah?
So echo a lot of what Steve said, and in the interest of time, just thank our paraprofessionals, especially in recognition of this week for all that you do to support our students and our district. Thanks to Melissa and Jaclyn also for the year that you served us last year. I really appreciate your.
It was only a year. I'm just kidding.
Especially given all of the, the communications that we had coming in from the community and your attentiveness to that at all hours of the day and weekends too. So I think that's everything that I have for tonight.
I'm just going to echo the similar sentiments. Thank you to Kyle and Hannah for kind of taking over this year and, and being up for the challenge. And thank you to Melissa for being chair and handling a majority of the communications with the community. I know it was inundating at sometimes, but she, she did a really great job with that. And thank you to our student school members for making the commitment to join us. And we look forward to working with you and hearing your voices from the high school and, and how students feel.
That's all I have.
All right, it's going to be hard not to repeat if you think so, bear with me. But first of all, congratulations to Kyle and Hannah. Wish you guys the best. We are, Jaclyn and I are here if you have any questions. It's a learning process that takes some time to figure out. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to us. We're grateful for your willing to step up for the role. And Jaclyn has been a great member as well. So she, I appreciate your help this year with everything we had to do with. So that was great. Also, welcome to our student school board members. As Steve said, we had a great time interviewing everyone, and we're looking forward to have you, having, hearing your voice at the table more. Please do not hesitate to speak up and get our attention. We love to have you as part of the conversation as well. And can't go without saying thank to the paras, having worked in that position before and having been highly influenced by them for the children that I have in the district with help with paras. I just thank them all so gratefully for all the different things that they do that so many people just don't understand. They kind of are the glue that put everything together, and we're grateful for what they do. Also, I want to congratulate our music director, Erin Holmes, that was awarded the Jazz Band Director for their Music Educators Conference. I'm sure I messed up something there, but just congratulations to her for her ongoing achievement to working with jazz music and music throughout the state. Her passion is evident, and we're grateful to have her in our district. And that is all I've got, so thank you, everyone.
Well, I would just like to say sentiments to the same board members. Thank you, Kyle and Hannah. You guys are going to do a great job in the roles that you're at. And also, Jaclyn, thank you for kind of stepping aside so Hannah can have that opportunity. Steve did that for me last year, and I appreciate him stepping aside. So thank you for that, so I could be in the position. I'm glad you have it this year. Also to our school board members, welcome. You guys are a huge part of our board member team, and you are our heartbeat in the high school with the students. So I look forward to your updates and hearing in-depth, you know, about how students are excited or looking forward to things and wanting to change things in the high school. So looking forward to more in-depth on that. Jane, thank you. I mean, I don't think I've ever heard anyone stand up and say, well, Jane just didn't get it right this time. It's always, you're always spot-on. And thank you for that, because that's huge. You know, you're dealing with a lot of numbers there. And so I appreciate all the effort you've put into the work that you do. And looking at the, the numbers for just positive COVID cases, I'd just like to say thank you to the parents for being vigilant and getting their kids tested so they're not bringing them to school. So we can be in-school learning, because it's hard when kids aren't in school. And it's nice to see them in-school, learning and thriving and having that experience. And so just thank you to everybody that is, you know, keeping them home and, and just making sure that the district can move forward with everything. So that's about it.
Thanks, Rebecca. Yeah, Kennedy and Michael, welcome to the board. I know that we gra, we, we learned a lot and certainly appreciated. I mean, not just the input and the, and hearing things from, from Grayson and Alicia last year, but, but also, I mean, they, they stepped into the role and asked really insightful questions too, and challenged us to think a little bit differently about some of the policies that were being, and some of the things we were being asked to do as a board. And I know that, that you'll step into the role too and, and carry on that tradition. It's really important for the board and for all of us. Yeah, similarly, I'd like to thank Jaclyn and Melissa for your leadership the past year, and, and actually, all of you for your mentorship of me over the past year. I've, I've learned a lot, and it's an honor to be selected to, to be chair of this, this board for the, for the year ahead. And looking forward to working with Hannah and all of you. I'm, I'm very excited. I think we've got lots of great opportunities to continue to support our students, our school district and our administration. So that's it for, for me, I guess. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:33.
Second. Motion by Jaclyn, second by Steve. Our meeting is adjourned. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our meeting is adjourned. Bear with me on this.